We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. When we request that large groups select a spokesperson, we, I'm sorry, we request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When given testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. And there are no changes to the consent agenda, so I will get started with reading those cases. The first agenda item is case 15. Case C-12-20-179, applicant Mike Golly. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of East Side Bungalows North, a minor plat inside city limits. Location, northeast of 18th and Ohio Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 17. Case C-10-20-218. C-12-20-219. Applicant Coventry Investments LLC. It is on for layover. Request preliminary and final plat approval of The Rose at Coventry, a cluster subdivision outside city limits with waivers to Section 5394D lot frontage, 5399 sidewalks, and 53912 time limitations, along with rezoning from MU to R6. Location, southwest of 207th and Q Street. Does anyone wish to have this case removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 18. Case C-10-20-200. C-10-20-201. C-12-20-202. Applicant Ryan Blumpkin. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of 77th and Dodge, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from GC and GI to CC, GC, and GI, along with approval of the ACI II area of Civic Importance Overlay District for Lot 1. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location, south of 77th and Dodge Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 19. Case C-10-20-205. Applicant Burton Christopherson. It is on for approval. Request approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location, 10344 Fort Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 20. Case C-10-20-206. Applicant Bernard Venditti. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to R7. Location, 1219 South 6th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 21. Case C-10-20-207. Applicant JAT Ventures LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to NBD. Property is located within the ACI I Overlay District. Location, 3922 Harney Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 22. Case C-10-20-215. C-10-20-216. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC and GI to NBD, along with approval of the ACI I PL area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location, 2102 North 24th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 23. Case C-11-20-220. Applicant Coventry Investment LLC. It is on for layover. Request approval of a PUD Plan Unit Development Overlay District. Location, southwest of 207th and Q Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 25. Case C-8-20-209. Applicant Tony Barnes. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow outdoor sports and recreation in the AG District. Location, 4906 South 80th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item 26. Case C-10-20-210. C-8-20-211. Applicant Matt Lawyer. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow auto sales in the CC District with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location, 7802 Military Ave. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 28. Case C-8-20-222. Applicant Mitchell Papin. It is on for layover. Request approval of a special use permit to allow general retail sales in the GI District. Location, 5719 North 16th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do? Okay. It'll be removed and it'll be heard in the order that it shows on the agenda. Agenda item number 28. All right. Agenda item number 29. Case C-7-20-214. Applicant St. Augustine of Canterbury Episcopal Church. It is on for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to the assumed conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R1 District. Location, 285 South 208th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion for consent items that are on for approval?
I move to approve agenda items number 15, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 25, and 26.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion for the consent items on for layover?
Motion for layover, items number 17, 23, and 29.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Those are the consent items on the agenda for today. No further action will be taken. If you were here for one of those items, you are welcome to stay, or you are welcome, you can leave if you choose to, so. We'll get started with the first three agenda items that are administrative only. There will be no opportunity for public hearing. Agenda item number one. Case C-10-19-251. Applicant with Sodia Acquisitions LLC. Request, it is on for final plat approval of Lake Livin', a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R7. Location, northwest of 168th and Fort Street. Dave?
Yeah, so, okay, it's on. Board, as we talked about in the pre-meeting, this is the final plat for Lake Livin'. The prelim plat was approved by this board on February 5th of this year with a number of conditions, as most preliminary plats have a number of conditions. All the conditions have been met at this point, or will be met when the subdivision agreement comes to the city for final approval. So we are recommending approval of the final plat and the rezon, I'm sorry, approval of the final plat and the rezoning from AG to DR and R7.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the rezoning from AG to DR.
And R7, and the approval of final plat, subject to the submittal of a revised plat document addressing the required notes and easements, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to the City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number two. Case C-10-20-86. C-12-20-87. Applicant Charleston Homes LLC. The request, final plat approval of Arbor View lots 382 through 533, outlots I through M, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Location, southeast of 216th and Fort Streets. Mr. Fanslaw?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Board members, the preliminary plat for Arbor View, this phase of Arbor View was at your planning board meeting in June, which passed with your approval. We are recommending approval of this final plat, subject to the three conditions in our recommendation report, and we also are recommending rezoning from AG to DR and R4.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve for the approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Approval of final plat, subject to meeting the following conditions prior to forwarding the request to City Council for final action.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number three. Case C-10-16-213. Applicant Gerald Torzen, Richland Homes LLC. Request, final plat approval of Westbury Creek lots 175 through 338, outlots G through I, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location, south of 213th and I Streets. Mr. Fanslaw?
Yeah, this is the, this next phase of Westbury Creek. The Department recommends approval of the Westbury Creek subdivision lots 175 to 338, subject to the three conditions in our recommendation report.
Comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move for approval of the rezoning from AG to R4, and approval of the final plat of Westbury Creek, subject to the three conditions in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, we'll open up next for the public hearing part of the meeting. We're going to take agenda items number four, five, and 24. Is that correct, Dave? Okay.
That's correct, yes.
All right. Agenda item number four. Case C-3-20-158. Applicant Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development. Request approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from downtown mixed-use and industrial to high-density residential. This was laid over from our August meeting. Location, northwest of 16th and Charles Street. Agenda item number five. Case C-10-20-141. Applicant Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development. Request preliminary and final plat approval of The Cotages, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from GI to R7. This was also laid over from our August meeting. Location, northwest of 16th and Charles Streets. And I'll get to agenda item number 24. Case C-11-20-142. Applicant Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development. Request approval of a PUD Plan Unit Development Overlay District. Location, northwest of 16th and Charles Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development, 509 Walker Street, Woodbine, Iowa. I believe all of you were given a copy of some information that we'd worked on with MSpace and Lovegrin for public outreach, kind of lays out the project. So, in a nutshell, this will provide 50 cottages, tiny homes for the homeless, as served by the Santa Francis House between 16th and 17th Streets and Charles and Clark Streets, just north of the Santa Francis campus. It will add to their capacity to serve the homeless and provide another level to their continuum of care for 50 tenants willing, able, and qualifying to take their next step toward independent living. It's going to be a gated community. I think will add to the area. Right now, it's not, not an extremely attractive, industrial-looking area. It will blend well with the residential neighborhood to the north and to the west. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have. And Linda Toomey is here from the Santa Francis House, as well as Mike Thompson with Ally Pointer.
I do have a question for you real quick. So, are there going to be rules associated with people living in these houses, then? And how will you make sure that they're complying if there are rules?
Yes, absolutely. This will be a Section 42 Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Project. It's very much supported by Tim Kenny with the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority. And so, with any of those types of developments, we have to have a tenant selection plan. We have house rules. All of those things will be well-spelled out so that we don't have any infractions and any security problems within or outside the gated community.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Darren, how long, on average, do the residents stay in the cottages, or do you anticipate?
This will be, and I can let Linda address this as well, but this will be permanent supportive housing. So right now, they have apartments already that is permanent supportive housing. The intention is that we fill these cottages with individuals able to move on to independent living, but they will continue to receive permanent supportive housing for as long as they need to while they're there.
Hi, I'm Linda Toomey, the Executive Director of the Santa Francis House. The average length of stay for those in our current 48 units?
Need your address.
1702 Nicola Street.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. The average length of stay for those who live in our current permanent supportive housing apartments, which their 48 is approximately four years. They opened in 2012. Some of the initial residents that lived in those units continue to live in those units, about 40%. So, the average takes into account those that don't stay kind of as long-term.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions, comments from the board? Mr. Fanslaw?
So, yeah, we got three items. I will give our recommendation separately, and then you can vote as you see fit. Number four, for the approval of amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan, to take this site from downtown mixed-use to an industrial, split, to high-density residential. We are in support of that documentation and analysis, staff analysis tells us that it's a justified request, and we are recommending approval of that request. Number five, the prelim and final plat of The Cotages. We are recommending approval of the rezoning from GI to R7. Approval of preliminary plat, subject to four conditions in your recommendation report, and approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat and the submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request on the City Council. And number 24. Staff is recommending approval of the PUD, subject to the applicant obtaining required waivers for setbacks, setbacks for parking in the front yard, and the number of off-street parking stalls that were required by the code, and the submission of an acceptable final PUD plan before forwarding the request on the City Council.
Okay. Let's just take them each individually. Agenda item number four. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Isn't here, sorry. Morris?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, agenda item number five. Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the four conditions outlined in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to hearing by City Council.
We have a motion.
Can I interrupt for a minute? Mike, did you, in our recommendation report, there he is, the rezoning wasn't in there. So I didn't catch if you moved to approve the rezoning as well. It's not in your report, so.
Okay, so the rezoning from GI to R7?
Correct.
And I move for approval of rezoning from GI to R7. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And finally, agenda item number 24. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the PUD Plan Unit Development Overlay District, subject to obtaining required waivers for setbacks, parking in the front yard setback, and off-street parking number, and the submission of acceptable final PUD plans prior to forwarding the request to the City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, agenda item number six. Case C-10-20-182. Applicant Stan Houston Equipment. Request rezoning from CC to GC, laid over from our September meeting. Location, 4240 South 50th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Wayne Wagner, Stan Houston Equipment, 4240 South 50th Street. First off, want to start, we appreciate the flexibility from the last meeting as far as holding it over. as holding it over and still being able to keep kind of our timeline. We worked extensively with planning staff on developing a new option. We were able to modify our rezone quest, request going from light industrial to a general commercial zoning, which would still fit our needs and was more amenable to the neighbors. We met with Andy DiAgosto, who's from Panda Inc. They own and operate the Arby's there, addressed some of their concerns, kind of walked the site. He said he will, they no longer have any opposition to the rezone. We also met and kind of went back and forth multiple times with Mr. Lerner and Ben Meyer of Lerner Companies. They're, they own other properties within the development there. We've come to an agreement, and it's based on advice from staff, that we're going to reduce the amount that is going to be rezoned. And we were initially going to look at separating it along between the larger former grocery store space and the shopping, small shop units to the north, but found there were some building code issues that would prevent us from doing so. It would have to be a three-hour firewall, which would be very disruptive to the current tenants in the shop. So, what we're going to do to address that with Mr. Lerner is we will be initiating additional declarations and covenants on top of what was established when the site was developed back in 93, which will limit the use of those shops for basically what they are right now. So, those agreements will be between the landowners in the development, and the support of Mr. Lerner and Lerner Companies is contingent on us having those in place prior to the rezoning in December. So, we've, like I said, it's a little bit of an irregular shape. We've also received notice from the planning department that they'd be able to do an administrative replat for us, which would break Lot 1 up into two separate pieces, which allow for the rezoning of just really what's needed versus doing the entire property. Any questions?
Wayne, yes, I do. So, first of all, thanks for being flexible yourself and agreeing to meet with the neighbors. Obviously, that was very important. But my question is, did you meet with all of the building owners in that area, including Children's Hospital, First National Bank, and?
We were able to get a letter to everybody. There were multiple attempts. Most people are limiting who they're inviting into their businesses right now. So, outside of the phone call and attempt to stop by, we met with Andy with Panda. The gentleman that lives, owns the brickyard behind us from the construction company, met with him, just discussed it over the phone. But we were not really able to deal, or to meet with any of the other neighbors, other than basically sending a letter to them and inviting them to contact us with any questions.
Okay, so you did send a letter to them?
Yes, they received a letter this week.
I think they'll be pleased that they're going to remain CC?
Yes.
Obviously, those neighbors that you're talking about, so that's good.
Yep.
So, good adjustment.
Okay, any additional questions for Wayne? Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Come forward, give your, how you doing?
Good afternoon, Jay Lerner, the Lerner Company, 10855 West Droad. Can I take this off?
Sure.
Okay, okay. So, just since the last time, we have met with Wayne and Stan Houston, and we have basically reached an agreement that's satisfactory, not only to them, but to us and the neighbors as well. Mr. Pete, for your information, I have spoke and contacted with First National Bank and Children's Hospital, and they are both happy with the changes that are being made. I have not spoken to the church or the other tenant that's there, but they never asked or never, they still, they'll still have to approve the change in the declaration. So, I just want to make, there's one small change to the site plan that, I don't know, can I put it up here? Oh, yeah, there's a way, okay. It's, it's almost impossible to see, but the site plan that he showed you had a little diagonal area here. We just straightened it out and made it at right angle. So, it didn't impact anything, other than it didn't come through the middle of a ingress, egress aisle. So, we just, that's correct, and Wayne has seen that, and they're good with that as well.
That's the site plan we have too, Jay.
Okay, okay. That wasn't the one he showed, that's why I brought it up. And then, and then, so I'm happy to move forward. I would, I don't know, I can leave this with Dave or with you all. So, this is just showing, we didn't want to hold up the rezoning, so you're going to recommend this today. But before it goes to city council, what Wayne talked about that we agreed upon, there's certain use restrictions, CC for the small shops, there's certain restrictions even in the GC area, like manufacturers, kennels. We have, and I have that in here. I don't know if you care for that or not.
If you want to hand that to Dave or Lisa?
Okay, it's correspondence that we've had with him, and it's passed along to the planning. But that can be done, that, so that can be done before it gets approved by the city council, we can make those changes. Because obviously, if it gets moved forward, and for some reason this doesn't happen, then I wouldn't be up here saying we're good with this. But I'm making the assumption that this is going to get approved. They agree with it, we agree with it, we just got to get in writing, and we will get that. And so, I want to thank you for your consideration, and as far as we and the neighbors are concerned, we're good to go.
Thank you, Jay. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Mr. Fanslaw?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, I appreciate, we laid this over last month. Staff has done quite a bit of work, to put it mildly, on trying to come up with a solution, working with all parties involved. I want to just make it clear that there's going to be an agreement between the property owners on restricting uses with those covenances that we won't be party to. We can't, we're not going to condition the zoning on those two parties agreeing. It sounds like they are in agreement, but we're not party to it. I just want to put that on the record. But we do have the correspondence. It's the intent of everybody involved to come to some resolution on that before it goes to city council, so. I just want to make sure that whatever administrative subdivision is required, and I'm not sure who's doing the work on that, what engineering company's doing the work on that, but make sure it's the one that everybody's agreed to. So, when staff gets it, we can compare it to the diagram we have in our rezoning file and to the administrative subdivision, we can sign off on that. So, with that, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from CC to GC, subject to the submittal and approval of an acceptable administrative subdivision for the new lot prior to forwarding this request on the city council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I motion for approval of the rezoning from CC to GC, subject to submittal and approval of an acceptable administrative subdivision for the new lot prior to forwarding the request to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number seven, case C3-19-88. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of a substantial amendment to the 2019 Consolidated Action Plan. Location, City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Bill, you're presenting.
All right, well, thanks so much, Bill Lucash, Omaha Planning Department. This 2019 Consolidated Action Plan Amendment allows the city to program CARES Act money that we receive from HUD and allocate those funds into programs to benefit the community. Most recently, we received 2.1, 2.01 million dollars of CDBGCV III funds from HUD, which can be used for rent and mortgage assistance. And those funds will be allocated to match the metropolitan area continuum of care for the homeless for those purposes. Excuse me. And then, there's about 4.2 million dollars of ESG funds, emergency solutions grant funds, and those funds can be used for homelessness solutions, rapid rehousing, shelter operations, street outreach, those types of things. Also in here is a reprogramming of about 1 million dollars of home funds. Those funds were going to be used for new affordable housing construction. The nonprofit developer that we were working with could not find matching funds right now due to COVID-19. There's been a shift in the philanthropic community on where those, their funds are being allocated right now, away from capital improvement projects, more towards service provision, so no fault of the nonprofit housing developer. Those funds are going to be reprogrammed to an urban homestead program, which is acquisition of an existing home, rehabilitation of that home, and then sale of the home to a qualified home buyer. There are some other minor changes in here as well, but those are the three major things driving this amendment. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, Bill, there's been considerable public dialogue about, you know, some of these programs and availability to the funds actually to the intended applicants. Is there any speculation as to when these funds, once approved, would become available to the general public?
Yeah, and that's a great question, thank you. So, these funds, we'd still have to go through city council, so about another 30 days after this. And then, it usually takes another 30 to 45 days to, that's for the approval of the action plan. Once the action plan is approved by HUD, then that allows us to enter into agreement with those nonprofit organizations that provide those services. And that can take another 30 to 45 days, depending on boards meeting and approving agreements and those kinds of things. So, I would say at a minimum 60 days before these funds would reach the nonprofit organizations, and then it would be up to them on how quickly that is deployed into the community from that point.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Bill. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Fanslaw?
Yep.
I have one quick. I think, should I recuse myself from this? I know we didn't talk about it in the pre-meeting, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, let the record show that. All right. Let the record show that Sidney Franklin has recused herself and left the meeting. Okay, Mr. Fanslaw?
Yeah, the department recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I'm assuming that Sidney would recuse herself from agenda item number eight? Any, any funds go to?
I don't think they're receiving any funds directly in the next one.
Okay. All right. We'll find out, okay. Agenda item number eight, case C3-20-61. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of a substantial amendment to the 2020 Consolidated Action Plan. Location, City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And Bill's presenting.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me back.
Let the record, just a second, Bill. Let the record show that Sidney has come back to the meeting.
Okay. Welcome back, Sidney. Thank you. The 2020 amendment, this is basically a reallocation of another round of home funds that were slated for the same nonprofit developer to do affordable housing construction. Again, they could not find the matching funds. We have reprogrammed this money to rental, a little bit of a, excuse me, the urban homestead program, which is acquiring existing homes, rehabilitating them, and selling them to qualified home buyers. There are some other minor amendments that we're taking care of, but that's the main driving factor here. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Mr. Fanslaw?
Yeah, before I give the recommendation on this one, I was, I waited to give comments until Bill was done speaking about both of items, his items. I just wanted to publicly thank Bill and his staff for all the hard work they've done with this new round of funding, and hasn't been an easy job to coordinate and help reallocate those funds. Hasn't been an easy year for any of us, but I'd like to just thank Bill again. They've, they've done a great job in, with all these amendments that have gone through with the reallocation of this money. The official recommendation is the department recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
We do approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number nine, case C3-20-194. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location 1806 Miami Street. And Autumn, you're presenting.
Good afternoon, Autumn Evans, City of Omaha Planning Department. Item number nine, the approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Address 1806 Miami Street. Here is a, sorry about that. Here's an image of the property here, city-owned. The interested party is proposing to do an administrative replat and build one single-family home in the future. See here, the site is 2,559 square feet, zoned R7, and we will sell this for minimum of the appraised value to an interested party, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Do we have a timeline that Mr. Simpson's going to build on that?
He informed me possibly in the next couple of years.
All right.
He is here if you have any specific questions on that.
No, that answers that.
Okay, in the next couple of years.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments for Autumn? Thank you, Autumn. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Mr. Fanslaw, do you want to add?
I just want to add one thing. I pointed out at the pre-meeting that the development proposal is, the description of it is wrong in your recommendation reports. The applicant lives at 1801 Corby. These houses, these three, well, the house, the lot that he's acquiring is along Miami Street, and we'll make sure that correction's made before the report moves on to city council. So, no, just that the department recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 10, case C3-20-195. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location 5102 North 36th Street, 2005 North 40th Street, 3930 Belondo Street, 3917 and 3929 Burdette Street, 1819 Emmett Street, 2117 Locust Street, 3634 Saratoga Street, and 3738, 3746, 3822, 3827, 3829, 3838, Worth Street. Autumn, you're up again.
Thank you. I didn't know if you wanted me to sit down and stand back up, so I just.
You might as well, you're up for a couple more, so.
Okay. Again, item number 10, approval of the disposition of city-owned property under a community development law. Holy Name has approached us for the acquisition of 14 parcels for the construction of affordable housing. Single-family housing will most likely happen on majority of these properties, and they will have to go through the planning department for building plans prior to the development of these sites. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Do you want a picture?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike Golly, Executive Director of Holy Name Housing, 4324 Fort Street. Yes, we tend to use all but one of these for single-family homes. Quite a few of them will be applying for funds in December. There are the gray lots on this side of this map and in the area we've been building quite a few of. Most of the homes will be either two-story house, looks like that, or a single-story ranch that's handicap accessible. And, let's see, what else can I tell you? And the one on 36-something Saratoga, we're assembling some property in an area where Brown Street's been abandoned between 37th and 36th, and we're accumulating all the vacant property in that and hoping to redevelop all that. If you have any questions, certainly willing to answer those.
These are, I think we discussed this upstairs, these are rent-to-own?
Most likely, yes.
Most likely?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a tax credit program called rent-to-own, so we will rent those out for the first 15 years to people who income qualify.
Thank you, Mike. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Mr. Fanslaw, did you want to add?
Just that the department recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rossacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 11, case C3-20-196. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law. Location: 2102 North 24th Street. Autumn, you're up again.
Thank you. Autumn Evans, City of Omaha Planning Department. This property is currently a, it's a parking lot. This parking lot was built to support the businesses in the area, and we are proposing transferring the property to Omaha Economic Development Corporation to support local businesses along 24th Street. And, let's see here. The site is 18,524 square feet. It's currently being rezoned under this planning meeting, and the applicant intends to continue to use the site as a parking lot in the future, if I didn't say that already. And I'm here to answer any specific questions that you may have.
You know, Autumn, one thing I forgot to ask is, I presume that in its current configuration, it's adequate, there's no repairs or improvements that need to be made to it?
The parking lot was built in October 2016. It was started and completed in 2017, so it's fairly new. There are storm water management systems underneath the parking lot, and so it's, the transfer is subject to a post-construction storm water management agreement with the buyer. But other than that, the recipient, OEDC, has been maintaining the property for the past three years and utilizing it, and so before we transferred, we just wanted to make sure that they did a really good job of maintaining the property, and they have shown that they have done an excellent job maintaining.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm here to answer any other questions. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the board? Mr. Fanslaw, you want to add anything?
Just that, as we discussed in the pre-meeting, this case is associated with number 22 that was on consent for approval that rezones this property from GC and GI to NBD. NBD requires a parking lot, and NBD zoning requires a use permit. Since it's there, it's assumed to have that use permit, so there's no further action needed on this property for this, for this transfer or for the rezoning, so with that, the department recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Rossacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 12, case C3-20-197. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of declaring city-owned property as surplus. Location: 3819 North 24th Street. Autumn, your last one. I'm still confused about the surplus, but.
Autumn Evans, City of Omaha Planning Department. Item number 12. The site location is 24th and Laird Street. The site consists of one commercial building, and the site is approximately 12,400 square feet, includes a vacant two-story commercial building formerly known as the Native Omahans Club. We decided to declare this property as surplus to allow us to sell the property. We have received multiple interested parties over the years, and because of that, we are going to do a request for proposal of the development of the site, which I do have copies of the RFP here, if anyone's interested in seeing that. I'm going to send that out on Friday, contingent upon the approval of the surplus of the property. And we encourage developers to submit proposals that would benefit the community and hopefully restore the building to a newer condition. And the appraisal of the building just received is appraised at $110,000, and we aren't requiring that that be the minimum price for this. That price can be worked into the proposal of the proposed development, and I am here to answer any questions that you all may have about the site. And Bill, would you like to add? Okay.
So, thanks, Autumn. Bill Lucash, Omaha Planning Department. This property, I think, is a fairly important property in this part of town, and we certainly want to make sure that we've done a proper amount of community engagement on this. So, one of the things that has happened in the past is the Forever North Study, and that study conducted over the last year, year and a half, maybe two years, gave some ideas about how the neighborhood, North 24th Street, could sort of be envisioned, what steps are needed to make those changes. And so I think one thing that we're going to provide to anyone that would propose on this is a copy or a link to the Forever North Plan, so that they understand the context of this building in the neighborhood. Whoever, and I don't know, we haven't really talked about this in detail yet, but either the top two or three, or maybe the top proposal that we get, I think that they need to do quite a bit of community engagement about their vision for the property before we actually make a decision. You know, we've had a lot of different requests, what this could be, from mixed commercial to residential, mixed commercial and residential, to straight commercial, to community space, to a place for a bank. So, there's a lot of different ideas, there's a lot of different thoughts, but we need to find out who's very serious about this property and how it can benefit the community. So, there will need to be some strong community engagement before any decision is made, I think. Thank you.
How big is that, is the property? How big is the lot?
I can handle it. 12,400 square feet.
So, about a quarter, about a third of an acre? A little more than a third of an acre?
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the board? Dave, did you want to add anything?
Just that the department recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rossacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Autumn. Thank you, Bill. Agenda item number 13, case C3-20-198. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the TIO 15th and Farnham TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: Southeast of 15th and Farnham Streets. And Don, you're presenting.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, on behalf of the Omaha City Planning Department. This is a application for our TIF program, tax increment financing. It involves three buildings adjoining buildings in the Central Business District, prominent location downtown at 15th and Farnham, the southeast corner. You may recognize the buildings, the one on the corner, the largest building, built in 1881. Doesn't have a formal status designation as a historic building, but it is eligible or has been deemed eligible for listing as a local landmark, and it had previously, most currently been the location of Louisiana J's Restaurants. Probably familiar with it, Jimmy John's is the commercial tenant next door. This is going to be a comprehensive rehabilitation of these three older buildings, quite a bit of work involved that will result in 18 apartment units in the upper levels of the buildings and about 7,200 square feet of street-level retail or commercial space. The owner or developer is Bread Pudding LLC, managed by Jim Boozer and Brian Keel. This project represents an investment of a little more than $7.3 million in the Central Business District. The applicants are requesting $710,000 in TIF support. Project's been approved by the city's TIF committee, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Hi, Jim, I haven't seen you for a while.
It has been a while, Mr. Rosenbach. Glad to be here. Good afternoon, Jim Boozer, 10250 Regency Circle, Suite 300. Here on behalf of the applicant, Bread Pudding LLC. This project, particular project, has a soft spot in my heart. Some partners and I purchased this property about two years ago and have been looking forward to the redevelopment of the site. The buildings, the three buildings here that we're talking about are in pretty rough shape. I don't know if you were, those who have eaten in the Louisiana Kitchen remember, but there was kind of an atrium when you walked in, and a partial floor up on the second floor. We're actually going to fill in that complete second floor to create another story to that building. Because of the historic nature of that building on the corner, we are going to preserve the facade. We're going to spruce up the windows and clean the facade, but generally it will remain in its current condition or look a lot like it does today. Now, the ground level will look substantially different effectively. We're going to rebuild the sidewalks, the right-of-way along the two buildings, both on Farnham and on 15th Street. The sidewalk will be fairly unique along 15th Street. It'll have two different levels. There's quite a bit of slope from the south to the north, and in order to make up the grade, we're going to essentially split the sidewalk. We're going to have some planter boxes in the middle. The westerly part of the sidewalk will remain at its current grade, but the lower level will allow another access into the building and some outdoor patio seating, which we think will be beneficial to hopefully a restaurant tenant that might occupy the space. We're really looking forward to all of the redevelopment that's going on along Farnham Street. We think that with what we're going to do, both on the facade and in the sidewalk, it'll be a pretty desirable corner there for tenants, and again, we'll have some, the plan is anyway to have some outdoor seating along Farnham Street for our prospective tenants. Jimmy John's is going to remain a tenant at the building. That's the current plan. We're talking to them about whether we reconfigure their space some, but the long-term plan is to keep them and keep them operating while we're under construction. All of the second and third floor of the building will be completely redone and building to apartment units, there's 18 apartment units currently programmed. There's about 7,200 square feet of retail total in the two, in the three buildings. The largest building is, of course, which is on the corner. So, we're really excited. We hope to start construction probably sometime in January. It's about 12-month build, we think. We'll probably start a little bit of, we've already done some demolition work. All of the windows got broken out as part of the, on the ground level, as part of the problems we had downtown for a little bit, but we're looking forward to getting the whole thing. Again, it's really going to be gutted and redone. So, happy to answer any questions, really excited about getting started on this, and it's going to be a great project.
I'm just curious, Jim, in our packet, it talks about the rehabilitation work is designed to resolve the challenges of floor levels that vary throughout the project. Are you, how are you going to go about doing that? I mean, I'm just curious for myself, how are you going to go about doing that?
Well, Sean Gibbons is here from HBA, and he's been hired to solve that problem, and we're still wrestling with it a little bit. I'll let Sean describe a little bit about what we're doing.
Sean, we'll need your name and address.
Sean Gibbons, Holland Basham Architects, 119 South 49th Avenue. We're contemplating a couple of different scenarios. The three buildings, as they sit today, the second and third levels have three to five feet indifference in the various floor plates. We think we can solve that with some creative vertical circulation, but we're also contemplating the scenario where we actually just go in and remove a couple of those floor plates and make them more consistent across all three buildings. Obviously, cost will impact those decisions, but.
One of the reasons for your TIF is the difficulty in.
Absolutely. Not only the difficulties of the three buildings themselves, but also the grade change across from north to south on 15th in addressing those issues as well.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Greg, I have a, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind for Jim or Sean, either one first.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, just a second. Just a second, Mike.
Sure.
Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mike?
Thanks, Greg.
Go ahead.
So, I'm looking at the math in this, and I'm a little confused a little bit. So, your total estimated assessed valuation is 4.35, four and three-quarters million dollars, right? Your total project cost listed here are $7.3 million. Have you got an appraisal?
We do not have, we do not have an appraisal. We are working with a financial institution right now on appraisal.
Because my question is, I'm curious, and the next item on the agenda is the same way, if the assessed valuation is supposed to be about 95% of true valuation, that would make the total appraised value should come in around $5 million, if this estimate is correct. In addition, you've got about $2.3 million in additional costs over what would be the, maybe the perceived value. So, why would you engage into a acquisition and building project where the valuation may be quite a bit substantially less than the value of the property?
That's a, that's a fair question. Jim Boozer, 10250 Regency Circle. So, we've tried to be conservative in our, I guess, let's call it our rent projections and what we're doing for our financial projections. So, we have, we have a lot of faith that this project on a long-term basis with redevelopment with redevelopment of the Gene Lane Mall and some of the other projects that are going on in the immediate area will support some substantially higher rents in the future. And so, there's some good faith that's going on. We're probably going to have to invest in, I guess, in a typical amount in equity in this project going forward. We're looking at also, at EEA, is a possibility to help fill some buckets, some gaps that we have. We're with the current tenant and with our prospective tenants that we've identified, we've talked to them about the challenges that we have with the financing for this project and the costs that are involved. And, but we, we do feel confident that we can make this work and that it is a long-term play for the ownership group. And I would question whether there's a better corner in the next twenty-five years in Omaha, Nebraska than Fifteenth and Farnham. And so, there's, there's quite a bit invested in faith in our group in the future of this corner and what it's going to be on a long-term basis.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, this is a great project, I like the project a lot. It's, it's great for, for, see, I've got a little problem with TIF, quite honestly, the, the, the TIF and, and how we're arriving at the numbers on, on some of the TIF projects that we're doing. So my final question to you is, is do you think four point seven five million dollars is the fair assessed valuation on the property?
Well, I guess.
You might be, it might be counter to what the assessor believes it might be worth, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's a tough one to answer, Mike, yeah. I appreciate that. So, you know, you know, we're, we're going to find out some things when we get our appraisal back from the bank. And the banks, you know, you know, you know the business.
I sure do.
And so, we're going to be constrained by that appraisal on our financing and, you know, they, I think that the, is in the application and the, the analysis that was done, they're looking at what's, you know, kind of in the area for valuations. And a hundred and fifty-three dollars a square foot is, you know, that's kind of, that's kind of where you're at. And so, again, I don't know how much to add about, you know, the, the propriety of, of this whole project, but we do need the TIF. And we have TIF-eligible expenses coming out our ears on the project, acquisition costs alone. And then the right-of-way improvements that we're going to make on, on both Fifteenth and Farnham, we think will be a pretty good amenity for the city. I mean, it takes a, kind of an ugly corner right now and I think we're going to transform that into something that is going to be more consistent with what you're going to see across the street in the Gene Lane Mall. So, I'm an advocate for TIF in this project, obviously. I think that there's, there's going to be a lot of public benefit that's going to be served by this money and it's really, with how thin the project is, I think it's necessary to, to support it. I mean, I don't think the but four is even a question here.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that. And, and as these guys know in pre-meeting, I, you know, I had my banker's hat on more than I had, you know, but I had to ask those questions because it just doesn't, it, for me, it just, the math doesn't make sense in this. And I understand the, the rationale behind getting the TIF, I certainly do. And so, I'll be supportive of that, but I was just curious on the valuation part. Thanks.
I think I, I'd just comment in general too, that as TIF projects goes, this is a, you know, it's a fairly modest percentage compared to what we see on other projects. And, and I can see the, the pinch problem that Mike's talking about and adding any more debt is always a, a big problem down the line. But I do agree with you that this is a very good location and that whether cash flows first day is, is probably a question, but, but long-term, it's, it's a good move for the city to be able to upgrade this property, so.
Any other proponents? Oh, I closed the public hearing, I'm sorry. Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Fanslaw?
We recommend approval.
You have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number fourteen, case C three dash twenty dash one ninety-nine. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the Bohemian Apartments TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, northwest of Twelfth and Williams Streets. And Don, you're up again.
All right, thank you. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This is a new construction apartment project, the Bohemian Apartments. Another application for our tax increment financing program. This aerial is kind of looking to the northwest, project site is here. The applicants have also done this project and a project here as well. This is the Thirteenth Street corridor due south of the old market. It's fairly recently designated a historic district, a little Bohemia Historic District. So this project is kind of butts up right against that historic district. Total of a hundred and twelve market rate apartment units will be involved in this project. Eighty-three one-bedroom, twenty-nine two-bedroom units. I should note, the project's going to need rezoning, replating and design reviews. We're here today looking at the TIF proposal. And for the applicant and the board, I just want to remind you that approval of the TIF does not relieve anybody from the responsibilities of meeting all the city development code requirements for the other approvals that will be needed for the project. Developer is William Twelve LLC, operated by Claire Devco, managed by Mike McClay and Mike Peter. This project has an estimated total cost of about seventeen point eight million. They're requesting two million fifty thousand dollars in TIF support. This project's been reviewed and approved by the city TIF committee. Complies with the goals of the city's master plan and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Tom McClay, thirty-eight, fourteen, Farnham Street, Suite two oh one. I was here on behalf of the applicant, the, I'm the owner and developer of the project. I do have a hot-off-the-presses rendering that I've put up here to at least be able to give you folks a little bit more of an idea of where we're at. We're quite bullish on this neighborhood, the Little Bohemia neighborhood. We did get sponsored and got the, the National Historic District that Don had mentioned earlier, approved by the National Park Service just a couple of months ago. This is a new construction portion of that. We do have some additional properties that will be, that are now part of that historic designation that will be continuing to develop here through the years. The, Mr. Pete, I, you foreshadowed that you're going to have questions for me as well as Bread Pudding LLC. The nature of this project is we view the future of this neighborhood very strongly. The present neighborhood evaluations, I don't think, are reflective of where they hopefully will be in the future, which I think is a part and parcel of why the TIF program exists itself, to encourage this type of development. The City of Omaha, in my opinion, is, is starved for continuing neighborhood business district development like this one. There's not many, I think, that have all the right elements to create this. I've been involved in much of the development of the Blackstone District, which I think its development over the last five years is representative of, of a lot of a desire for that neighborhood business district type of development across Omaha. And this neighborhood, I think, is, is really primed for that to occur. We have this project, we have several more that we'd like to see in the near future. All of the elements, years ago, we got a tax increment subcenter implied it approved for this exact purpose. When we did the Ro House project up around the corner here, we now have a National Historic District to save that historic fiber that does exist in the neighborhood. And now, we're, we're here to start investing in some new construction, which we believe we've done in, in a nice manner to address the residential neighborhood to the east, blending into a little bit more commercial development as you go west towards Thirteenth Street. And keeping in context the size and the scale of the neighborhood as it exists today to seamlessly make it really something we, we hope the, the city will embrace in the future. And its proximity to downtown is very desirable as well to all the jobs and, and Bread Pudding's new building. Hopefully, our, our residents can get there. So, I guess with that, I will answer any questions anyone has and ask for your support.
Great, and I, and I, and I will have probably some of the same questions as the previous applicant. So, have you gotten appraisal? Do you know if there's been an appraisal?
I don't have an actual appraisal on this, this specific details of this project. I have decent ideas what I think it will appraise at.
Yeah, so if you wouldn't mind sharing that, what do you think? Because, because right now it's showing an assessed valuation, estimated assessed valuation of nine point seven million dollars, which is about fifty-five percent of your total costs, which is quite a bit less.
Yeah, so I guess my first comment would be that really means it needs TIF. First and foremost, the TIF is a screaming need then in this scenario. Secondly, I think it hopefully will appraise higher than that. There are assumptions that are made as we look at this in terms of valuations of apartments on a per-apartment valuation as it exists today in twenty twenty, that we go, that are really, that are oftentimes based upon apartment valuations across the City of Omaha, not in particular neighborhoods, not in particular locations, particularly one that I think has the opportunity for more rapid improvement than some other apartments. And so, I think that the current, the, the actual evaluation, actual valuations that we get to may not be exactly what is presently here that we're looking at. So, I would say that there is a gap here right now as we sit. That's the reason we're, we're here asking you all for, for tax increment financing. But as I said earlier, we're quite bullish on this area and this neighborhood. We're creating a product to have Thirteenth Street, which is really developed with a bunch of local independent operators. This is walking distance from that. It's new construction. We have a different, a little bit different product, as you might see. You know, you have a, a front door on Twelfth Street that approaches, so you can, you, you're, you're, you're in an open-air environment going in. The courtyard, which is on the middle of this, between the two buildings, those units open in directly into the courtyard and to an open-air environment, which again, we found in the last six months, it's been a very different world for rentals in terms of being able to have that access directly to an open air. So, it's all of those elements that, this doesn't fit directly in the bucket of apartments on Hundred and Sixty-Eighth and Dodge Street and the way they're styled. I think we have something that's a little unique and therefore is going to, going to have a brighter future, in my own humble opinion.
And I, don't get, again, don't get me wrong, I like the project too, I like the project and I can see the justification for the TIF. My argument's probably more with the assessor than it is anybody at this point in time. If I'm the lender on this project, I'm going to lend you ninety-five, ninety percent roughly of the costs. Ninety percent of, of cost, right? So that would put the appraised, would have to put the appraised value or, or the appraised value, or the value at about, oh, what did I come up with here on that? About nineteen point eight million dollars or so as a value? And we're looking at a, an assessed valuation of nine point seven million dollars? Because the lender's not going to loan you more money, I don't think, anyway, if your total project costs are ni, eight million dollars short of what the value is. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so, you're saying they, they would lend ninety percent, I mean, so.
Ninety percent, ninety, so typically the rule of thumb is ninety percent of total cost or, or eighty-five percent of appraised value. So if it's eighty-five percent of appraised value, you know, that puts that in, in north of nineteen million dollars.
Sure, and so valuation costs aren't necessarily directly tied. I mean, if you're, if you.
No, but assessed valuation by statute should be around ninety-five percent of the, of the true value of the property.
Right, but the cost and the valuation, they, they don't have to hypothetically be the, the same, the loan to cost.
But if you're the owner of the property, if I'm the owner, let me put it this way, if I'm the owner of the property and I've got a value, a building valued at nine point seven million dollars and my costs are eight, seventeen point eight million dollars? Why would I do that? Because, because if that's your value and you had to sell the building today?
Right, so I guess are you, what you're driving at is it's underappraised?
I don't know if it's underapp, I don't know what the appraisal is, I think it's underassessed.
Okay, underassessed, I should re, here, right, that'd be specific.
And so that's why I say, I think my gripe's more with the assessor than anybody. And it doesn't, it's not really relative to the TIF here right now, but I just had to get this off my chest because it's, it's something, something's not right with the, with the math in my estimation with regards to how the projects or the TIF projects are being assessed today. Okay, because you would not want your property to be valued eight million dollars less, right, than your costs.
I wouldn't mind it being assessed that low, I wouldn't want it appraised that low.
That's my point.
So, I, I think you're, you're driving at is it's, it's being, but I, I guess what I would tell you is that we're going right now, we're, we're making, we're making assumptions on what it would be assessed at once complete at a point which is, I mean realistically, three-plus years almost away as we stand here today.
Right.
Because by the time we complete it, by the time you get to the next January one, by the time, I mean, you, you're, 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 you're trying to, we're trying to kind of look a little bit through a foggy crystal ball to, to determine that. What I can tell you from developing a number of these across the city, similar to this, similar size, similar scope, similar price, similar urban neighborhoods, is that it all, it, it gets about right when it's all said and done.
I'm sure it probably does.
When you finally get to that point where the assessment is completed, the assessment comes through, it finally, it, it gets to that, it gets to about where it, it should be. I haven't seen many of my projects not be at an assessment level that makes sense. Is it, is it a tad low, it could be a tad low, it could be a tad high, but it's not too far off. And then, again, I mean, when, when it is a tax increment financing, it's not as relevant what that assessment is until the TIF burns off.
Right.
And when I have seen TIF burned, burned off, it is, it, it always seems to get right on the number that I have seen for valuation as it does come to that end of the time period. We do seem to hit it and, and sometimes, oops, sorry, sometimes even before the TIF burns off, you get into that, you know, year-ten time period or whatever and it, it does seem to start gravitating towards even probably a too-high of a number, oftentimes.
You're talking about the assessed value?
Assessed value, yeah, at, at the end. I mean, and so, you know, that's really where the rubber meets the road. That's where the city gets its revenue is once that TIF has burned off. So I, I think it's, I, I think the process does work. I mean, it's been working for the last couple of decades. And, and I guess from my own standpoint, whether it's valuable, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm not totally objective. From my standpoint, I wouldn't worry that much right now when we're trying to determine some assessed valuations on something several years down the road. And I don't, as a developer, worry about it because I have a pretty darn good idea where I think this will all end up when it's all said and done.
Yeah, well, you made, you made the comment, which I totally agree with, which is it may be underassessed and you're okay with that for obvious reasons, right?
I, I mean, I was, I was joking.
But that's my point, and I'm all for TIF, don't get me wrong. I like TIF if it's used properly, and I'm not saying this isn't used properly, but it's got to be used properly and we got to make sure that we're following the rules of this, which you are in this, but.
And I, and I would say, and like I said, I would, I would say the argument, it's being more than used properly if, if, if your contention is it's, it doesn't have the valuation than it's really being used properly because why the heck else would be, be doing this if we didn't need the TIF?
Then it should be assessed properly.
And, and what I'm saying is I think it does get assessed properly. I mean, what, what you all agree on here and what happens, I mean, that's not an absolute number. I mean, that, that's not, that's not the gold standard, so whatever's, whatever's put in the TIF application, the assessor still comes in later on, three years from now, and makes an assessed value. So, that, that's where the rubber meets the road and that's what I'm saying. My experience is, is that assessed value when it actually happens gets pretty close to, to real value.
Well, if you get the appraisal, it'll have to be reflective of what the appraise, should be reflective somewhat of the, how the, what the appraised value is, right? Which Don begs, begs the question too, is do we not require an appraisal on, on TIF requests like this to, to know?
We have at times, but it's not, it's not a mandatory or standard requirement. We've only looked at it when we've looked at assessed values and found them to be maybe suspect based on other projects we've seen or comparables in the area. Quite frankly, when somebody comes in with a total project development cost that's higher than the assessed value, we kind of look at that and say, well, that, that makes the assessed value, taxable value, a little more realistic. Sometimes I've looked at it when it's the other way around. Somebody comes in with a twelve million dollar project and they think it's going to have an assessed value of. Somebody comes in with a twelve million dollar project and they think it's going to have an assessed value of close to twelve million, it's like, are you sure about that? So we have requested appraisals, but it's not a mandatory requirement.
Yeah, this one, there's just such a gap between what the assessed value is and what the costs are in this thing. All right, thank you.
Tom, would you come back?
Sure.
I thought I had a good feel for the project. I got an easier question for you. I thought I had a good feel for the project, looking at your rendering there. These are all connected, correct? Or is there a space between?
There is, so there's, there's three, there's three different buildings, actually. We call them A1, A2, A3. So they're, they're not too dissimilar to our row house project we did on 10th Street, just adjacent to this one. So they're kind of pods, if you will. There's, I think, we have three here, four, five, and then six or seven. So there's small gaps between this building and this building.
Okay, and then the building back-
And then this is, then there's a courtyard in between.
The courtyard runs the entire length of the-
It runs the entire length of north-south of the building to a small parking area on the north, up to the further north. Let's see, I thought I might have brought, yeah, here we go.
And there's indoor parking, correct?
We don't have that, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, this is, and to speak to Don's point earlier, yes, we're fully aware and have been working on the final touches to our rezoning and replat, and actually, the team is having a call with Mr. Fanslaw's department employees as we speak, that I was gonna be on. So this is the corner here of Twelfth and Williams, so you'll see there's a small gap between it. This is the long building with the courtyard that runs through the middle. These are all then apartments in this building, and then there's a small, the parking lot here to the north. This lower level of this building, that's not the one I wanted. The lower level of this building, you enter the parking garage right here.
Parking garage, okay.
And that entire lower level is all parking for that. And then it's three floors of apartments up on top of the parking level.
Yeah, we didn't, gotcha.
Yeah, we didn't have that site plan, so it wasn't making sense and you can't read the small print, then you're not sure what these are.
Sorry, yeah, we, this, this was just, I just printed both of these out. These are hot off the presses, as I said.
It makes sense now.
Yep. And that's already been submitted for site plan review by the city, the planning department and the like, and we anticipate within days to have all our rezoning replat files.
Nice looking project.
Thanks, I think it's, I, we really tried to, tried to blend it in seamlessly to the neighborhood. The challenges I thought were interesting is William Street historically was a commercial street, and then Twelfth Street, of course, is very residential. So we wanted to give William Street a commercial feel to it, and I've gotten a number of folks in the neighborhood seen, talked to, and they really do like that aspect. One of them said, I really like the idea of you don't walk along that street. It feels more comfortable walking along when we bring it closer to the street and the property lines. But then it transitions right to residential very quickly along Twelfth Street with housing over on the east side. So we didn't want to just put a big blob of an apartment building necessarily. We wanted to blend better with the neighborhood with just two stories at Twelfth Street so that it felt more seamless into the store character, the neighborhood. And then, and we even kept this building, smaller building B, we'll call it. We even actually kept a smaller than we've typically done in other locations because we didn't want to overwhelm the neighborhood. So we kind of kept it in context.
Thank you, Tom.
All right.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Mr. Fanslaw?
The department recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you all.
We're gonna take agenda items number sixteen and twenty-seven together. Agenda item number sixteen is case C10-20-203, C12-20-204. Applicant, Skanel Properties, number 451 LLC. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Country Club Plaza replat one. A minor plat inside city limits with approval of the ACI four overlay district. A portion of the property is located within the ACI four overlay district. Location southwest of Seventy Second and State Streets. And agenda item number twenty-seven. Case C8-20-213, C7-20-212. Applicant, Skanel Properties, number 451 LLC. Request approval of a large project special use permit along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in the CC District. Location southwest of Seventy Second and State Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. I'm now resuming my regular role down here at the playing board as attorney for the developer, which is Skanel Properties. And I have here with me today Dave Madrigal from Skanel Properties, also Trish C. and Jacob Royer from Kimley Horn, who are the project civil engineers, and then Barb Joslin, who is the, with BL Companies, who's the project architect. So the, before I get into the project, the requested actions that we have before you today are a minor plat approval, ACI four overlay on two of the lots, existing lots that do not have that, presently have that overlay district. And then there's a special use permit for large projects and a conditional use permit for wareh- warehousing and distribution. So I have up on the board, the project site. You can see 680 on the north of the project, Seventy Second Street, and this is State Street. These actual site is currently three lots and one outlot that are part of the Country Club Plaza development, which was developed over ten years ago. Was, there's an existing SID, there's one existing property in their meta badge, which is in the southeast corner of the site. This will be the remaining lots within the site, which are about twenty-five acres in total. The project, as you can see, it's about a half mile south of 680. The project itself is a hundred and forty thousand square foot last mile distribution center for a national e-retailer. With the package with the submittal, there was an operational statement. I'm gonna go over a few of the items in there, but I think that in reviewing that, you'll have a good sense of what this project entails. The, we'll have a twenty-four seven operating schedule. The deliveries, meaning the packages that are coming into the project, will be delivered by long haul trucks, semi trucks. Those deliveries are made overnight, almost entirely, between ten, ten AM and six AM in the morning. That will allow restocking of the warehouse facility. There will be approximately two hundred and thirty delivery vans that are staged and depart from the facility on a daily basis. The delivery times, so this particular operator has quite a bit of history throughout our country and has really geared its operations to understanding traffic flows. And so they have their operations geared around non-peak hour departure times and arrival times for the delivery vans. So those delivery vans will take off starting around ten AM in the morning. Over the course of an hour, just staged deliveries, leaving the site. And then the vans, the delivery vans that are delivering the packages locally will return sometime between seven and nine at night. Those van drivers will bring their own vehicles. The vans stay on site. They will, the workers, the delivery van workers come to the site every day in their vehicles. And then when they are off their shift, they, they drive home and leave the vans there. There are several hundred full and part-time jobs that will be created by this facility. In the operational statement, you'll see that those jobs start at a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour. All of the employees will have full benefits. The, the project itself, the intention is to start construction in January, which obviously is a challenging time in Omaha, Nebraska, because there's a lot of site grading that needs to be done. But because of the nature of the project and significance and the particular user, they're able to accommodate that type of schedule and are willing to expend the extra funds that are required to grade during that period of time. So I don't know if any of you drove, have driven out to this site, but as you drive along Seventy Second Street north, and I guess maybe just a little bit of additional perspective, this, it really lies right across to the west from Omaha Country Club. So Country Club Plaza, where you drive into OCC, is immediately to the south on the east side. And then the, so the site itself, just maybe walk through a couple of items on the site plan here. So most of the deliveries will come, or all of the delivery vans and the trucks are generally accessing 680 is the primary departure standpoint, and then they'll go east and west to either catch twenty-nine or eighty or various parts within the city of Omaha, you know, arterial streets. So there's very little impact from a traffic standpoint, really to the south. And all of the traffic going in and out of the site is departing to the north. So, and we have, we've just submitted to the playing department our traffic study. Jacob made, if there's trap, questions, questions about traffic and the amount of traffic generated, Jacob's here to answer those questions. The neighbors. So we, this was my first neighborhood Zoom meeting in any project. So with the, obviously with the challenges of COVID, it's a little bit difficult to gather in a place. So three weeks ago, we sent out a public notice to all the folks that are, a letter to all the folks who are within five hundred feet of the site. And we had a Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago. We did get participants mainly from the, from the users to the north and that, there's a business park immediately north of State Street, but also the landowner to the south, Dave Davis was on the phone. And then we've also separately had a number of meetings with OCC. We knew the importance of that neighbor to this project and their interests that they would have in this development. We've had, I think, two or three Zoom meetings, one in-person meeting, and then several telephone conferences. And I guess I'm pleased to say that I think that we've reached a complete consensus on, you know, one of their main concerns or one of their issues was they're hosting the senior open again this year. And they had some concern about the construction traffic and some of the operations that would be going on during that tournament. They've used the drive area, which is coming down State Street to Seventy Fifth Street as part of their, they, they, they have parking up by the North Omaha Airport and then they run buses back and forth for patrons and they use that loop to then go across the street and park in the, in the grass, which is on the east side of Seventy Second Street. And so, anyway, they wanted to make sure that that street was gonna be accessible. They wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be having traffic that would impede with their, the operations of the tournament. We've come to some agreements with them on that and then some landscaping, beautification issues and, and I think we're fully, fully on board with OCC. So that, that was a major consideration from a neighbor's standpoint. But other than that, a lot of positive comments. The Toiches who operate the meta badge facility in this subdivision are really excited to have us because frankly, this street, which was constructed by the SID, this loop road here is falling apart and the SID didn't have the funds to rebuild it. And so as part of our project, we're committed to, and we need to have that street in good, good condition. So it's gonna be rebuilt to a good public street condition. We've been working with Public Works on that. With that, I am here to be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the project and then the professionals that are here would be happy to answer questions as well.
Couple of questions, Jim. I know you said you talked with OCC about landscaping, I take it? Gonna, is this gonna be, from your picture, it looks like it's gonna be surrounded in landscaping or at least along Seventy Second Street and somewhere along State Street. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so this landscaping plan is really our onsite landscaping. The discussions with OCC really had more to do with the Boulevard Street, that Seventy Second Street, the Four Lane. That, four years ago, when they hosted the tournament, they did some fairly nice improvements along Seventy Second Street, really adjoining our site. And they have been maintaining, those are non-public standard improvements, and they've been maintaining those improvements. And so they had an interest in us being a good neighbor and participating in the cost of maintaining those improvements. And so that's part of the discussions we've had with OCC. And then they also were wanting to do some, maybe some landscaping type improvements on the east side of Seventy Second as well. And frankly, they saw that this is an opportunity maybe to help facilitate that. And so we've, I think we've been pretty accommodating with them in that regard.
Then tell me about your onsite landscaping along Seventy Second Street and State Street.
I might let Trish address that.
Okay, Jim, before you, before you go, just another question. I noticed you'd said like their, their delivery trucks, they're out at ten AM in the morning to avoid traffic. Well, you got two hundred and thirty delivery trucks. What time do those workers get there in the morning?
So as I understand it, about nine o'clock in the morning.
About nine o'clock?
Yeah, so they're, they come a little bit in waves because the trucks leave in three waves. They have a line of, as I understand, in shifts of seventy-two trucks, so there's basically three waves that leave.
Yep.
There's a, they, they've loaded, preloaded the trucks, so the ten o'clock deliveries are ready to go. They depart, the next wave comes in. So there's a little bit of staging with the delivery workers, with the delivery van drivers as well, but it's generally around nine o'clock that they start arriving.
Gotcha.
Good afternoon. My name is Tricia C. and I'm with Kimley Horn, a civil engineer, located at-
Address, please.
What's that?
Address, please.
Yep, located at seven sixty-seven Eustace Street in St. Paul, Minnesota. One quick thing on the traffic that you were just conversing about. I just want to clarify that I think was referred to as delivery trucks, that's really delivery vans. It's not trucks, it's just like the Mercedes Sprinter vans.
I've seen them, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, so it's not gonna be a huge amount of trucks coming in and out. The trucks is just the twenty-one overnight that come to the, to the northwest corner of the site.
My mistake, I misspoke.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that, I don't think there's that many out there. In regards to the landscaping, I'm gonna show you a rendering that we have. So we knew it would be important to add additional landscaping along Seventy Second Street. So this is a view, I'll go back here real quick. If you were approximately right here on Seventy Second Street, looking northwest, this is what you would see. It's also important to note that because of the fifty-some feet of grade difference on the site from the north to the south, that this building is gonna be sitting quite a bit lower than the main intersection of Seventy Second and State. So this, this rendering really starts to illustrate that in that you'll see the top portion of the building will have two tiered retaining walls going down to the parking lot and down to the building level, meaning from the top, you'll see, you know, a four-foot, like, safety fence and then the landscaping in front of it. So we'll have trees, I believe it is every thirty-five feet, and have some shrubs and perennials between it. And likewise, it'll be very similar on State Street, so I can show you one view from the corner. This would be from the corner of Seventy Second and State, looking southwest.
Tricia, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that.
I'd like to ask you a question regarding the traffic. You say there are going to be three waves of seventy-some of these delivery trucks. Then is, is there going to be a need at, at Seventy Second and whatever that street is?
State?
Well, both, both State and Reynolds.
Reynolds?
For any traffic control.
Jacob Royer with Kimberly Horn and Associates at seven sixty-seven Eustace Street in St. Paul, Minnesota. So with the off-peak characteristics of this being not your traditional seven AM to nine AM and four to six PM, we didn't, in the initial build-out year of this, there isn't any need for a signal at either Seventy-Fifth and Seventy Second Street or at State and Seventy Second Street. It'll operate pretty close to what is existing out there today. But by twenty forty in our Horizon Year analysis, then it starts to get to deteriorate a level of service. So it's something that'll be monitored into the future if a signal will be required, but it won't need it on opening day.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board? Mr. Fanslaw?
Yeah, thanks. So obviously, there's two cases. Number sixteen is the, the plat in the rezone, and then twenty-seven are the use permits. I'll go through both recommendation reports, and you can act accordingly. On the plat, it's pretty, it's a minor plat, preliminary final together, pretty standard comments. As you would guess, that there was a lot of traffic comments in our report, conversation today here, conversation in our pre-meeting. So those are part of the nine conditions in our rec report, so they'll have to be addressed. So the department reckons, on, on the minor plat, the department recommends approval of the ACI four area civic importance overlay, rezoning for the site, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the nine conditions on our recommendation report, and then approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior forwarding to this request of City And number twenty-seven is, the case is the approval for the large project special use permit, along with approval of a conditional use permit for allow warehousing and distribution limited in the CC district. Again, pretty standard stuff. We got into a lot of analysis when it came to the land use and planning section of our report, talked about the parking, talked about the landscaping, and what is required as far as what the code requires. The applicant mentioned the, the trees being spaced at thirty-five feet on center along the parking lot and the right-of-way. There's also part of our code, section fifty-five, nine twenty-eight, that talks about the amount of trees for interior parking lot landscaping. The plan submitted shows fifty-three trees. Code would call for eighty-one trees, so we're going to be looking for a bump up in the trees so it can meet code. Urban design weighed in, obviously with the ACI overlay. We pay particular attention to, well, a lot of things with that code, but in, in this case, the material and the design of the building. So urban design staff, yet this, still this morning, was working with the architect on this project at the, not only the building materials that are, that are part of the, the building, but the way they lay, the three dimension of them, you know, so we don't have flat surface, so we got some, some, some difference in elevation depths. So we're still working on that with the applicant, but we're confident we can get there. So we would, we're going to recommend approval, subject to, we're going to recommend approval on the conditional use permit, subject to the eight conditions in our recommendation report, which again, talk about mostly building elevations and landscaping and stuff like that. But there's eight conditions for the conditional use permit approval, and we recommend approval of the special use permit of the large project special use permit in the CC district, subject to eight conditions as well.
Okay. Do we have a motion on agenda item number sixteen? I'm sorry.
I move for approval of the eight. Four area of civic importance overlay district, and approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the nine conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion on agenda item number twenty-seven?
I move approval of the conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in the CC district, subject to the eight conditions outlined in the recommendation report, and approval of the special use permit to allow a large project site in the CC district, subject to meeting the following eight conditions outlined in the report.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Good to see you, Jim.
Thank you so much. Yeah, great to see you, too.
Agenda item number twenty-eight. It was on consent for layover. It was pulled off. Case C eight dash twenty dash two-two-two, applicant Mitchell Pappin. It is, the request is approval of special use permit to allow general retail sales in the GI district. Location, fifty-seven nineteen North Sixteenth Street, and is the applicant here.
Good afternoon. Michael Sands, seventeen hundred Farnham Street, on behalf of the applicant. So just because I, I realize it's a little unusual to, to request being taken off, off of layover, I just want to give some context and background. With me is the applicant, Mitchell Pappin, he's the developer, David Levy from my offices, and John Coolidge, who's the, the engineer on the, on the project. So we, we requested it to be taken off layover today so that it could be heard and, and hopefully voted upon. We've been working with the planning department with, for a few months now, and, and I think my client even before then, on this, on this plan or project and the, and the site plan, it, it obviously went through a site plan review. We incorporated many of those changes that we could from that site plan review, and then we, we received the report last Friday, I believe, from the, the planning department, which included some additional changes in, in that. We did make some of those, the ones that we could, which are in the materials that I just passed around to you all for your reference. But outside of that, I think that the, the real crux of, of why we're asking it to be taken off of layover is that aside from some of the, some of the small changes, which we did incorporate, such as showing that, an enclosure around, around the, the garbage facilities, and some, some moving around of the landscaping, the real issue, I think, that, that is outstanding is, is not one that is going to change in a new site plan next month, and, and that's the issue of, of the setbacks in the buffer yards. So that, that's the reason we, we wanted to take it off of layover. My client is on a construction schedule, so, you know, pushing it back a month, we don't believe to be, to be prudent, and at, at least from the standpoint, that the, the site plan is, is, is likely not going to change with respect to those setbacks. So just real quickly, and I, I don't want to take up too much of your time, I did want to go over quickly, though, the, the need for the project, because I think that's really important, it's an important backdrop for it. And there's a reason why I put this exhibit as the first exhibit in the packet that I handed out, and what that demonstrates is what would be called a, a grocery desert exhibit. And, and what that means is that that blue area, that red dot is the area of the project or the side of the project, and that blue area represents a ten-minute walk from, from that red dot. As you can see, there are no other grocery stores or home goods stores within that blue area, and even beyond that, there certainly aren't, you know, very many, even, even beyond that area. And the ones that there are, you know, a couple of them, you would have to cross Highway seventy-five, which is, you know, not viable. I guess what, what I should have premised this upon is that, you know, there is a need in the area for a walkable grocery store and, and, and home, home necessities, store with home necessities. There are folks in the area that, that don't have access to vehicles, and so they, they need to walk to get their groceries, and there, there truly is nothing in the area. And that's primarily what, what Dollar General has identified. It's a need in the area that, 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 that needs to be filled. So, so that was their purpose for, for bringing the project to this specific parcel. So with respect to that, I, I think that that exhibit does speak volumes as to the need. We've also spect, spoken to, to representatives in the area or from the area that have echoed that unanimously, that the area needs a grocery store and, and a store where you can get home necessities. So the, the feedback on that has been unanimous. I mean, that, that folks have to walk twenty-five blocks or more to, to get their groceries, and, and that's not very workable. So I think the other, some of the, the next pictures in there, and I won't flip through them all, but I will highlight a couple, are just the current state of the site. And I know the planning department does its, its drive-throughs, so I'm, I'm sure that they saw it this morning or whenever they did that, but I, I think it's, it's helpful. So I think that's a view from, from actually Sherman Elementary on, on the, that'd be the east side, sorry. There you go. See if I can zoom out. There you go. So that, that would be looking towards Sixteenth Street from Sherman Elementary School. As you can see, you know, there is a chain link, link fence, I think in some of the other pictures, it shows the state of disrepair, and you can kind of see it on the right side of that photograph. It's an, it's an overgrown lot. It used to be a, it's concrete from, from property to property line. It used to be an airport parking facilities, facility. It's been vacant for six years since that. It's become, you know, it's, it's transformed into a considerable state of disrepair and, and a health and safety hazard, especially considering you have a, an elementary school on one side and a community center on the other side, when you have a, you know, a jagged disrepaired fence and a lot of overgrowth, that's, that's, you know, not, not very safe and certainly not very attractive. So, and this is, you can see from another angle, I believe that's on Sherman Elementary as well. And then the next view are just kind of the general disrepair of the site, and you all have the packets, so I won't focus too much on it, but you can see there that the fence in many areas is, is nonexistent or toppling over. So the, I guess the purpose for showing those is that, like I said, I think it's important to, to get a feel for the backdrop, for the need for the, the project. There's no sidewalk, as you can see on that picture there, along Sixteenth Street. My client will be putting in a, a sidewalk. Certainly, there's a broken and dangerous fence, which they'll be putting in a new vinyl fence that would be much safer and more attractive, and it's just a general, general eyesore and hazard for the area. So just the revitalization of that corner and putting an essential need in there, in a vacant space, i- is, I think, a benefit, and I don't think the, the planning department disagrees in any way with respect to, to that, that it, it'll be a benefit and needed project for the area. And, and I would just add that it is next to a school. I know that there are a lot of questions about alcohol sales with respect to next, with respect to being next to schools. Dollar General will not be selling alcohol whatsoever at this store. So just, I know that, that, that is a, a question that often comes up with stores going in next to schools. And also to the state of disrepair, I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, at the outset of discussing with my client, I proposed the, the idea of asking for TIF, because it, it could very easily be eligible for TIF. It's in a flooded and substandard area. And, you know, they, they looked at it, and their response was, you know, we don't need the money on this project, we want it reinvested back in, into the area and the community. So I just wanted to offer that, that up as, as the kind of folks that, that you're dealing with, at least. So we have discussed the, the project with the school district. You have Sherman Elementary on one side, and with Omar Parks and Rec, which runs the community center on the other side. We haven't received any negative feedback. Generally, they, they all seem very pleased with, with that, that the site is being developed, very pleased with our willingness to work with them on landscaping and, and clean the, clean the site up. So we have reached out to those folks. So given those factors that I mentioned at the outset, and, and kind of the, just the general condition of the area and what we're proposing, I, I think it's, what, what I'll move on to is kind of the reason why we've incorporated the planning department's comments to the greatest extent possible, and I promise, these are my last points, and won't take up too much more of your time. But, so looking at, at this exhibit right here, that I have a, something John Coolidge, our engineer, put together.
Mike, Michael, I'm going to interrupt you for just a second here. And you're welcome to keep speaking. It sounds like you're giving us points that you need to discuss with the planning department before you come back to discuss them with us.
Well-
To, to work out with, we're, we're here, we'll listen to everything, but it sounds like you've got details that you want to work out with the planning department before you give us your presentation.
Sure. I apologize for beating around the bush. I probably should have led with that. I guess our stance is that we, there are, there is nothing more that can change with respect to the site plan and applications submitted. So we do not, we haven't identified any discussion points that are viable. The planning departments and, and that, that was kind of the, the point of this exhibit, that as I can, in discussions with them prior to this, and from their comments, their main issue is with the buffer yard. We're asking for a reduction in the buffer yard at sixty feet by, by the zoning on the side of the school, on the, the east side, fifty feet on the south. That's because the parcel is zoned industrial. It's, it's under a half acre, so it is not compatible for an industrial use, and, and both the school and the community center are zoned residential. So you have three parcels that are zoned, that are not reflective of their uses, which creates a, you know, a, a very large buffer yard. And, and the planning department's stance has been, you know, we could support some reduction of that, but what you're asking for is too much. And, and at this point, you know, the reason, I guess, why, why we're up here and asking for, for a vote instead of a layover is, is that we can't, we can't go any further. So there, to me at least, and, and maybe Dave Fanslaw has, has more points that he wants to go over, but to me at least, it seems like that is, that is the primary kind of outstanding issue and the reason for the lay, layover. And that's not an issue that's going to be resolved between now and next month, because if any more space is taken away on either side, it takes away parking to the point where the project isn't feasible anymore, and the developer will have to move on from that site and find something different. So I, I don't want to take too mu, any more of your time up. Mitchell Pappin, the, the developer is here, so he can, he can certainly speak to any questions that you have regarding the actual development of the site. The only thing that, that I would point out is that in, in your packet, so you have the updated site plan- site plan that adds the dumpsters and masonry enclosures, the fence inside the buffer yard, specifically moved it back a little bit. Certainly, it can't be moved, you know, back too far from the property line, or else it would encroach into the parking lot and the building, but we moved it back as far as we could and placed all the landscaping on our side of the property line. And we'll continue to work with both neighbors to give them whatever they want, as far as landscaping goes. And the last thing before I sit down, we have discussed the truck access with Public Works. I realize that they haven't had time to review in full, but the truck access, all trucks will be coming from the south. And this is the last exhibit that I'll put up here. It's a letter from Dollar General committing that all trucks entering the property will be coming from the south, and all turning will occur in the parking lot. Deliveries come once a week. They would come outside of business hours, so it wouldn't be a problem for trucks to turn around in the parking lot. So what we would be asking for, to sum it up, I promise I will sit down and stop taking up your time, is that since the site plan itself will not change from what I've handed you, in our view, the only outstanding item, if the project is to move forward, is for Public Works to say, "We agree with this," you know, as far as the trucks, because we realize that that's a safety consideration of Public Works and not necessarily just a following what's in the code. It sounds like they're at least, you know, happy with what we presented, and all that would take is maybe papering it in some way. But as far as the application materials go and the site plan, that would not change. So that's why we're asking for a vote and your approval today. With that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions or otherwise turn it over to the developer for a few comments. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Michael, before you sit down. Maybe it's for Mitchell, I don't know. But with regards to the trucks, are they semis?
Yes, so they're-
So, you know, just looking at the site plan here, how do you propose that the semis would be able to make a full turn in the limited space that you have in the parking lot?
Well, I think Mitchell is best suited to answer that question. I think-
Yeah.
He has an exhibit showing that.
So the truck-
Mitchell, we'll need your name and address, please.
Mitchell Papin, 192 Oakville Road, Beaver Falls, PA.
Hey, thank you.
1501. Okay, so the truck will be coming from the south here, going, heading south on Sixteenth Street. It'll pull into the property like this and then back up to here to do deliveries here at the door. When it leaves, it just leaves north on Sixteenth Street. So all the backup, all the maneuver is within the parking lot. This is actually more conservative than what the truck will actually be, because the cat profile does that. But this is exactly how he will be doing the maneuvering. So no, nothing will be happening on the street. Everything's within my parking lot before store hours.
So all deliveries are before?
Before eight AM, so it'll probably head around seven.
So no customers?
No customers.
At that point?
And within my Dollar General lease, it's a restriction, so they know that it has to be prior to store openings. And, you know, they have a bunch of stores that are like this, and they can't do it with the trucks in there, so this isn't their first time ever doing this.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a loading dock there that they-
I could back, be able to back into?
So the loading dock is on the ground. It's flat. It's just a concrete pad. It's actually next to the dumpster pad. And the truck just, you know, it'll probably be like more right here, and then he just unloads his products into the side door here.
So the trailer itself doesn't actually have to go all the way into the building?
No, no. Just hangs out on the parking lot. You can see closely where the door is. But yeah, it's all flush with the asphalt.
What happens if a car gets left in the parking lot in the middle of the night?
They work around it. I mean, they, so like you're showing two backup maneuvers here, they could do three backup maneuvers, four backup maneuvers.
Hey, did you have anything else from Dad?
As for the rendering- This is what I'm proposing exactly. Here's the dumpster pad. I'm going to put this vinyl fence up along the property line. Right now, there's a chain link fence along the property line. I'm going to improve it. I'm actually going to add trees on the other sides of the neighbors. It's on my property, but it's pretty treason. They're happy with that. So everything will be blocked. So as for the setback, nothing's going to change as to what is there now. It's just going to improve the site with a building on it that people can shop at and create jobs. There'll be nine to twelve employees working here.
You said nine to twelve?
Yeah, not at one time. Three people work a shift.
Gotcha. Mitchell, did you want to add anything else?
Like you said with the TIF, they'll be paying school taxes, real estate taxes, anything, you know, that they get taxed, they're paying. So it's an improvement to the land that's what's paying there now. And overall improvement, I'm actually adding more pervious areas with landscaping. Right now, it's just non-pervious parking lot that is overgrown. It's been vacant for six years.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
I would like to say there's other Dollar Generals that are exactly like this. Here's one in Scranton, PA I've done. It's literally the exact layout. So it's, this isn't their first time with something like this.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. David Levy, 1700 Farnham Street. Just briefly, I want to emphasize, it's certainly not our practice to come before the planning board or any body of the city in disagreement with the planning department or to suggest that we're not willing to work with the planning department. I mean, that's always been my practice in many, many years of doing this. This site, though, is something that I think you see from time to time, where it's a challenge of infill development with our existing municipal code, our existing zoning regulations. Because of the way the regulations are, it makes the site essentially undevelopable. This is the exhibit that shows what you would be left with if you were to meet those setbacks. The other thing that's going on here is you've got an industrial zone site with residentially zone sites on two sides of it. That's what causes these very large setback requirements, but neither one of those residential sites are residences. One is athletic fields for a school, and one is the site of a community center. So it really, again, it's not our practice to come here and suggest that we're not willing to work with the planning department at all or any longer. That's not our intent. Our point really is that this is, to develop this site and meet the code requirements is not possible. And so we've worked with the planning department to try and address all of their other concerns. Certainly happy to continue talking with them between now and city council. But as to the site plan and the buffer yards, this is what we have with this site, and I won't belabor it. I think the case was made very well, that what's proposed here is a significant improvement for the site and a benefit for the community. You know, so it's just, it's a function of the code that we have, the regulations that we have just don't work on this particular site, and that's why we're kind of at this impasse and asking you to move us ahead despite the planning department's request for a layover. So I just wanted to make that clear, that that's not our point or our practice, but that is our situation, given the regulations that we have and the site that we have.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the board? Dave?
I heard what he said, so I guess I'm up. Okay, so where do I start on this one? I'll go, I guess I'll start at the beginning. It's my belief that staff did a site plan review letter on a site plan that's not much different than what you see today in your packet. It's also my belief that in that letter, I don't have it with me, so I could be wrong, that, I'm not sure how strongly it was worded, I don't think it was strongly, probably strongly worded, that we weren't going to be supportive of waivers to the degree that they were asked for. So I believe that to be true. Site plan review letter came out, and sometime later, we receive an application with basically the same site plan that we reviewed administratively, I'll say, a month before application was made. That timing could be off. So, you know, the reason for the layover was to hopefully work with the applicant and the representatives on making this site better than what was submitted. You saw a diagram that showed, I believe, a sixty-foot buffer yard requirement and a fifty-foot buffer yard requirement based on the adjoining zoning of the property, the zoning of the adjoining properties. I think most of you on this board know that when we get a site that needs to be redeveloped or wants to be redeveloped, we work as hard as we can to make that site as compliant as we can. I don't think it's ever been verbalized, on this site for sure, that we expected a fifty-foot and a sixty-foot buffer yard. But we feel that what's been provided is very, very minimal. So as you know, when we do a site plan review, or when we do a site plan review and then move into a use permit, one of the things we evaluate is how the use, the proposed use, will fit into the neighborhood and what effects it might have on the neighborhood. Now granted, some of this is civic and some of it's not civic. This is kind of a hodgepodge area of uses and zoning districts. But what we try to do is we try to make that project fit into the neighborhood as best we can. And oftentimes, we do not get full compliance with the zoning code and setbacks, buffer yards, tree planting, stuff like that. So we were hopeful that we could lay this over and continue to work with the applicant, and that's still going to be my recommendation to you. We do have questions. I know Ryan Haas is in the back about the truck movement, and I think it was adequately addressed by the applicant. But I'm calling on Ryan if he wants to come down at some point to talk about that, or if you have questions. Ryan's the guy to talk about those traffic concerns. So I don't think it's fair to say that our only concern was the buffer yards. Our concern, my concern, is that, as we talked about in the pre-meeting, as we talked about in years past, that some sites are just too small for what's being proposed on them. And a lot of the time, I want to call it any single uses, but a lot of the time, it's auto sales, right? We've got old gas stations, old sites around, and sometimes things just don't fit on the proposed site. I saw the pictures, I've been by the site a number of times, not recently, but yeah, it's a parking lot that did, that has been there for quite some time, that did receive zoning board of appeal waivers for buffer yards in the past. I didn't check the history on those cases, but I'm pretty confident that they went to the zoning board of appeals without a recommendation of approval from the department, as most cases do. So I don't know why, it's hard for us to then support waivers with a use permit that's supposed to be taking in other considerations surrounding neighborhood. It's hard for us to support those waivers when we probably didn't support them through the ZBA process. Another thing that we look at on use permits is not just the site, but what the building looks like. And usually, what we get is elevations that call out the materials, not a rendering. So, you know, one of our concerns with this site is, it looks nice, but I don't know what material that is, neither did my staff. So it's hard for us to recommend for you guys, for this board, and then on city council, to really what I would consider somewhat incomplete. And maybe they have some elevations. We haven't been privy to them, we weren't privy to them at the time of the application. So we, I mean, we only have a certain amount of time to look at cases. We have two and a half weeks from deadline day to the day we sit here, or at least when we go over the report. So while I appreciate that some information might have been submitted to the department, I think yesterday, there's no way in heck we had any time to review those. So we were hoping for a layover so we could maybe redesign, maybe a smaller building. I believe Public Works made a pretty, well, Public Works did make a pretty strong comment in their report that the loading area shall be removed or moved to from southeast to the You know, we've been, since I would say for the last ten years, we've been big supporters of infill development. We've been more flexible, in my opinion. I've been here almost thirty-one years. We've been extremely flexible. We've had some really good projects because of our infill guidelines and infill projects. But a lot of those proj, well, those projects just don't sacrifice some of the really hardcore code requirements that are in our code. You know, I've heard a couple of times that are, it's the code that we have. Well, the reason why we've been flexible with infill is so we can redevelop sites that aren't utilized. And I'll be the first to say that this site's not in the best shape, and it probably has a better use than a parking lot that I understand hasn't been used. But all things considered, if what's being proposed doesn't fit on the site, it's awful hard for us to recommend approval. I think that's all I had. Again, we've had plenty of use permits, either conditional or special use permits that have come through, where we work really hard with the applicants to get the side, get the site as code compliant as we can. We just didn't feel that what we reviewed for this application, for this meeting, went far enough on something that we could support. So that's why we recommended a layover, hoping that we could work with the applicant. So our recommendation stands, is layover.
I have a question. Is that all right? Yeah, sure. I haven't, I haven't asked for any motion or anything yet. So we're still discussing.
All right. I guess I, and I don't know if this is even viable in this situation, but was there ever any entertainment of maybe an alternate zoning that might be more compatible to this, that both with the area and with the intended use?
I wasn't, mic's up there, and I won't calm down unless I have to, but I wasn't involved in any of the pre-apps. I did review the site plan review letter, because staff was, you know, this wasn't something, a normal site plan review. So I did review the site plan review letter. The area, master plan wise, is industrial. Granted, there's a school and a community center, so, you know, does that make sense? So I personally didn't look at a rezone, but a rezone would be to CC, which would still require buffer yards larger than what they're providing in this application.
Okay. Ryan, would you come down, please?
Ryan Haas, with the Public Works.
Mr. Fanslow said that you may have, you've looked at this site, you have information on traffic, traffic parking, deliveries, that sort of thing.
Yeah, so the driveway is in the most appropriate place, given the frontage that the site has. So that's not a concern. The concern became when we began to review the truck delivery, turning movement templates. And the reason for that is that the city driveway regulations prohibit backing maneuvers to or from the public street. So we couldn't have a situation, or we can't support a situation, where the delivery truck pulls up on Sixteenth and backs into the site and/or delivers and then backs- pulls up on Sixteenth and backs into the site and/or delivers and then backs out onto Sixteenth Street. So with that in mind, we were skeptical that it was feasible for deliveries to take place from the north. They showed a template that it was feasible from the south, but that would be dependent on no one being in the parking lot. So, with that limited information, we, we kind of provided a, maybe a more specific condition of approval relative to what we usually do with respect to the location of the loading dock. In light of information we received today, there may be some alternative strategy, an alternative strategy would be some commitments from the applicant to maybe address that in a different way with respect to committing to a different loading time when no one would be in the parking lot. And then also, a commitment that the trucks would always come from the south. This doesn't have anything to do with Dollar General, we just see sometimes that there can be difficulty with getting the truck drivers to always take a specific route and avoid others. But if that's something that can be committed to, I mean, that would have maybe changed our recommendation a little bit. So, those are, those, that's kind of where the Public Works is on this. Their potential is that a solution could be worked, worked toward, but I don't know how to frame that right now at this point, given that the record report was kind of set up for a layover. In theory, if this had otherwise been recommended for approval, we would have probably had one or two specific conditions of approval to kind of hold them to over time with respect to that. So, I guess I throw that out there for the board, for your consideration. If you choose to lay this over, we can commit to continuing to work with the applicant and, based on that additional information, to evaluate and maybe change the recommendation if it comes back next month. But, so I guess that, that's kind of where the Public Works is with respect to the information provided.
Thank you, Ryan. Just asking, Mike, did you have anything to add? Okay, thank you. Any additional comments or questions from the board?
I'll just make a comment. I certainly understand the applicant's concerns here, but I also look at the recommendation of layover as a willingness to work with the applicant, and I was a little disappointed to hear the applicant say that they weren't willing to meet with the department again to try and work these out. If the department would have not thought that there might be some possibility of this working, I think their recommendation would have been denial. They're not recommending denial. So, I'm hopeful that if we approve a layover, that the applicant will change their mind and work with the department, try and work it out. May or may not work, but it certainly would be worth a try.
As a, thank you, Mike. As a member of this board, I'm not, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this project with as many, I shouldn't say problems, but as many areas that need to be looked at by the planning department. I don't want to put my vote on something that I really don't know what I'm voting on, one of them being the building materials, another one being what Ryan, I was talking about with the deliveries and that sort of thing. So, I like, I would love to have this project here, I'd love to clean up the site. I just can't vote for it today. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I agree with you and Mike, the same vote.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to layover.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, layover.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks for coming down.
Yeah, we'll work it out.
Good, good.
Can we be four twenty-eight next?
Say what?
Can we be earlier next?
You need to talk to some other people, not, not to me.
I flew in from Pittsburgh this morning.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the pre-meeting minutes from September?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion on the public meetings from September? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Franklin? Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Will you adjourn?
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved to adjourn four oh five PM.